Welcome to tonight's Muskogee Municipal Authority, August 26, 2024. The invocation tonight will be by our Deputy Mayor, Mayor Derek Reed.
Dear Lord, once again, we just come thanking you for another day. Just thank you for blessing us with the gift of this day, as that you would just come into the room tonight. As city councils come together, we have decisions we have to make for our community. Just ask that you just get in our hearts and our minds, and those things that we do will be in your will and in your way. Bless our community as a whole, the seniors, the youth of our community. These are many other blessings we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Flag salute, attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now the Oklahoma pledge.
I salute the flag of the state of Oklahoma. Its symbols of peace unite all people.
Okay, roll call.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy Hous.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
C.B. Abel.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Present.
Tom Martindale.
Here. Okay, item number one, please.
Consider approval of MMA minutes of July 22, 2024, or take other necessary action.
Yes, you have the claims for the MMA before you. We recommend approval and happy to answer any questions.
No, no.
Move for approval.
Second.
We're doing the minutes, not the claims.
Oh, forgive me. I jumped ahead. My apologies.
Substitute, substitute minutes for claims.
Thank you.
On the minutes, I move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Okay, item number two, and manager has already informed us about the claims.
Yeah, what I said.
Any, any questions, or are we ready to take some action?
I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a second, a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Motion passes. This meeting is now adjourned. Next, we will call to order the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority, August 26, 2024. Roll call, please.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy Hous.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
C.B. Abel.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Here.
Tom Martindale.
Here.
Thank you.
Item number one.
Consider approval of minutes of July 22, 2024, or take other necessary action.
Any questions, thoughts?
Move for approval.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Item number two.
Consider approval of Muskogee Redevelopment Authority claims for July 13, 2024, through August 16, 2024, or take other necessary action.
Mike Miller.
Yes, you do have the claims for the MMA before you. We would be happy to answer any questions, and the staff does recommend approval.
Move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Item passes. This meeting is now adjourned. Okay, next, we will call to order the Muskogee City Council meeting, and today's August 26, 2024. Roll call, please.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy Hous.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
C.B. Abel.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Here.
Tom Martindale.
Here.
Okay, next, we have the approval of minutes for the city call special, for the city council
special call session on July 15, and the regular session July 22, 2024, or take other necessary action. Approval of minutes.
Move for approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Motion passes. Okay, on to the consent agenda. We are striking item number 14 on the consent agenda, and we are approving items 1 through 13.
I move for approval.
Okay, I don't know that we need that, do we? Do we? Okay, thank you. About a second. Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so on 14, are we striking it, or are we moving it to the regular agenda?
We're striking it. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Now, our regular agenda, number 15.
Hold a public hearing and consider approval of ordinance number 4240A, a request to rezone from R1 Single Family, R4 Multi-Family, R5 Mobile Home, and C1 Local Commercial to a planned unit development for property owned by the Urban Renewal Authority and the Factory and Reeves II additions within Section 23 Township 15 North, Range 18 East, and have approved authorized staff to update the official zoning map of the city or take other necessary action.
Okay, Mr. King, we will now open this public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So, two weeks ago, we presented this to you guys, the rezoned for area in the urban renewal area, to a PUD, or called Planned Unit Development. Remember, the idea of this is to encourage both residential and commercial uses to coexist and cohabitate in one area, to kind of help fight the blight of the area and encourage redevelopment. City staff recommends approval. We'll take any questions.
Any questions from anybody? Okay, having no questions, we will close the meeting. And, do we have a motion or a second?
Move for approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second. Okay, roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Item number 16, please.
Hold a public hearing and consider approval of ordinance number 4241A, a request for right-of-way closures within the property owned by the Urban Renewal Authority located in the Factory Edition within Section 23 Township 15 North, Range 18 East, and if approved, authorize staff to update the official zoning map of the city or take other necessary action.
Okay, we will now open this public hearing. Mr. King, please.
So, this item was, kind of accompanies a previous item we discussed two weeks ago as well. These right-of-way closures are necessary for an economic development opportunity to take place in the Factory Edition, and so, the city staff recommends approval. We'll take any questions.
Yeah, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Probably, I'm not informed well. Why the name Factory Edition?
That's just the subdivision name that it was given when it was platted so many years ago.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome. It's probably been that way since then, but I would bet.
We've all done it that way.
Yeah, well, that's kind of interesting. Any questions or observations? Okay, we will now close this public hearing.
Move for approval.
Why don't we need that?
Move for approval? Yeah, we did. We have a second.
Second.
We got a second. Okay, a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Item number 17.
Hold a public hearing and consider approval of a request for a specific use permit to allow for a kennel, pet boarding, in a C2 General Commercial zoning district located near Hancock Street and Foltz Lane, or take other necessary action.
We now opening this public hearing. Mr. King.
So, this item, two weeks ago, had yet to go to Planning Commission. I reintroduced you briefly to the item last week, or two weeks ago, and then last week, on Monday, August 19, the Planning Commission met and heard this item in a public hearing. So, this is for, just so we're all oriented, on the map, there is a, on the right side, there's a little yellow triangle, where the bottom half is zoned C2, so it's orange, and the back half is white, and it's R1 Single Family Residential. So, this property, the request is to use the front half as a doggy daycare, the pet boarding facility, which by our code is defined as a kennel. It is to allow people to board their dogs throughout the day or overnight if needed. It would be one of the only facilities in the city that do this. That's not in a veterinary clinic or an animal hospital. So, it would be a unique commercial use for the area. The property is already zoned C2 General Commercial, so when we review our kennel requirements found in the animal provisions of the city code, Chapter 14-133, it says that the property must be zoned commercial. In our current code, there's an error. It says it must be zoned F Commercial, which was an old iteration of zoning code, which now equates to C2 General Commercial. The property must have required fencing and screening. If any dogs are contained completely within the structure, it has to be enclosed to meet building code requirements, and then such structure has to be at least 40 feet from the nearest residential structure, and if it's an enclosed containing dogs, it must be 100 feet from the nearest residential structure. And then code enforcement, building inspections shall have the right to inspect premises during normal business hours. All of these conditions for Chapter 14-133 were meant, but in order to mitigate any public nuisances, the Planning Commission has, in part, some additional requirements that we just want to make sure that are followed. Most of these requirements that I'm about to discuss are things that are in our general, our zoning code, and would generally apply. We just wanted to make sure that everyone's aware of them, the property owners made aware of these items, and they will be contingent on them meeting all these requirements to issue a certificate of occupancy for this building. So, first is that they must follow all the requirements of Chapter 70 subdivisions for all of those criteria outlined during the plating process that occurred back in April or May of this year. The biggest things that we wanted to make clear was that a concrete drive or asphalt drive or parking lot is required to conform to the minimum parking standards, as well as the minimum parking requirements, which to our code, a dog boarding facility or kennel is now listed on our parking chart, so the next closest use on our parking chart was retail, which means I need to have one parking space for every 250 square foot of occupancy space, and the proposed building is 2,800 square feet, so that would round up to 12 parking spaces needing to be required on the premises. And because it does not meet the minimum requirement for meeting handicap spots, none of them have to be handicapped, but if the property owner wishes to make one or two handicap, that is up to them. We also request a sidewalk run along the front edge of the property on Hancock as required by subdivision code. We do understand that there is storm drainage in that area, and there is actually a really large utilities that runs through the property diagonally, so this is only being enforced where applicable, and if it can't be done, then it's okay. We are aware of the problems that there may run into with having a sidewalk on that front edge, but we would like to see one if possible. For any lighting requirements, so if they have any kind of pole lighting or anything to illuminate an exterior field of a parking lot, then make sure that those lights need to be shielded as to not bleed into the abiding residential districts that they are near. They will also have to comply with the buffer zone requirement, which is to be had any time a commercial district abuts a residential district. This means that there needs to be a minimum of six feet from the property line, where there can be nothing occurring in that buffer zone except landscaping. We're also requiring that an eight-foot sightproof fence run along the entirety of the rear and side buffer yards to mitigate any noise or unseeming sights that may occur. And then, yeah, so, the only landscaping can be in the buffer yard, otherwise you cannot do anything else in that six-foot buffer yard. All animals must be kept indoors at sunset, and then in order to conform to the use standards in the zoning code, Chapter 90, 1304, subsection J, exterior closures and runs for all the animals to be indoors or outdoors must be protected against weather extremes. All floors may be, shall be made of an impervious surface to permit proper cleaning and disinfecting. All animal quarters and runs are to be kept clean, dry, and in a sanitary condition. All of the fencing, and that eight-foot fencing around the property, would have to be also buried to a certain point to help mitigate the issues of a dog maybe trying to dig their way out of a fence. And then, in addition, all these requirements, just a general rule of mitigating any noise or light to, as to not create public nuisances. But this shall exclude any noise from exercising or training. These dogs may occur outdoors during regular business hours. We did send a public notice to all property owners within 300-foot radius as required by state statute. We held a public hearing, the Planning Commission, on August 19, 2024, where the Planning Commission did vote to recommend approval of this specific use permit with these conditions outlined and must be met before a certificate of occupancy can be issued. And then the next public hearing is this public hearing of this meeting. So, staff recommends that the specific use permit be approved on the condition that all of the requirements outlined by the Planning Commission that I've gone over are met in order to obtain a certificate of occupancy from the city permitting office. I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. King? Is there anything else you want to offer?
I think that's it. The property owner, I know, did sign up to speak on the item. She is here, and she'd also like to give her two cents on her dream.
Thank you for a thorough job of presenting that. Yes, our citizen would like to come up to speak. I hope I get this right. Shelley Leckwe?
Very good, thank you.
Wow.
Right on, that never happens.
Just, just give your name, and that's it.
Shelley Leckwe. Thank you, everybody. I am here to, as Mr. King alluded, to get approval to open a doggy daycare and boarding facility here in the city of Muskogee. Currently, people have to call ahead roughly three weeks in advance. There isn't a lot of competition in this area, and I am putting my entire life savings into this. I am diving in. I'm a supply chain leader. I retired from Brockway Glass up here, and I want to stay in Muskogee and grow with this community. And I think that this doggy daycare would be a huge amenity for anybody looking to relocate into this area. A lot of millennials, you know, instead of having kids, they're having pets, you know? So, if we are trying to attract people to this area, I think this would be something that would be fantastic. And, you know, I intend to work with the community. I don't want to make anybody upset with the noise pollution or anything else that might come with a doggy boarding facility. So, thank you very much for your consideration, and I hope to see you all soon with your pets. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank, thank you, and good luck. Okay, I guess we will now close the public hearing, and...
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number 18, please.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 3,003, confirming the collapsed structure at 316 North Main as a public nuisance, ratifying authorization for summary abatement procedures, suspending purchasing procedures, and authorizing the expenditure of stabilization funds for purposes of abatement, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Bodenhammer.
Thank you, Mayor. If you recall, at our last meeting, I presented a slideshow related to the facade collapsing on July 24, 2024, and Main Street. The address is 316 North Main. We contacted the owners. They did not take any action to abate the nuisance, so we issued a summary abatement, and that was approved by the city manager to go ahead and abate the nuisance, and we brought in our demolition crew. And again, this is just the second reading of this, that we're presenting this for your approval, per the attached Resolution 3,003.
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Excuse me, Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Item number 19.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 3,004, adopting a safe route to school policy or take other necessary action.
Counselor Melody Cranford.
Yes, sir. I am asking for approval of our Safe Routes to School Resolution. I do want to make mention that we did change the wording to state that the city of Muskogee commits to work with public schools in the city of Muskogee and other partners. We already currently work with Cherokee, Irving, Hilldale, the sixth and seventh grade center here in the city of Muskogee, and intend to work with some after-school programs. So, we are asking for approval tonight so that the Health Department can move forward with some grants to get some additional things done.
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number 20.
Discuss and consider approval of Resolution Number 3,005, a resolution allowing Main Street Muskogee Incorporated to issue certificates of appropriateness on behalf of the City of Muskogee Historic Preservation Committee related to the Muskogee Renew and Rebuild Grant Program, or take other necessary action.
Mr. King.
All right, and I'll let the Deputy Director of Planning, Sarah Winkle, take this side.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The Renew and Rebuild Grant is being offered by Main Street Muskogee to property owners who wish to make building improvements or renovations or additions to their commercial property. And this is, resolution will allow Main Street Muskogee to approve the certificates of appropriateness that are required to do so for any changes made to historic properties on the exterior of those. We have done this before with the Main Street Muskogee facade, as well as the Neighbors Building Neighbors Program. It's, it's nothing new. It's something that the Historic Preservation Committee has already approved, and I'll take any questions if you have them.
Any questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Item passes. Item number 21, please.
Consider approval of resolution number 3006, a resolution adopting the bylaws of the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Trust Authority of the City of Muskogee, Oklahoma, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Bodenhammer.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, again, a housekeeping matter that was originally presented at our last Public Works meeting. The council at that time approved the bylaws for the Martin Luther King Trust Authority, but they did not actually approve the resolution. That was not attached to the agenda item, so we're just cleaning this up by attaching the agenda item, which is stated word for word as it was approved by City Council in 2016. We have just changed the signature blocks to update that.
I move for approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Upstaying.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Item number 22, please.
Oh, sorry. We're all going to mess up tonight. Go ahead.
Hold your horses.
You're trying to put me out of a job, I think.
Consider approval of resolution number 3007, a resolution adopting the amended and restated bylaws of the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Trust Authority of the City of Muskogee, Oklahoma, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Bodenhammer.
Thank you, Mayor. This is also a housecleaning item. Resolution 3007 has to do, again, with the amended and restated bylaws. The resolution that you just approved is for the adoption and resolution of the bylaws. This is for amendment to the bylaws. It's another thing that was done and approved by City Council in 2016. The resolution was not attached.
Any questions?
Motion for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Item number 21, please. 23. Hi, guys. I need new glasses. Item number 23.
Consider approval of resolution number 3008, declaring items of personal property presently in the possession of the City of Muskogee to be surplus to the needs of the City of Muskogee, and authorize the city manager or his designee to offer for sale or dispose of the same, all as per attached list, or take other necessary action.
Mr.?
Panita is willing to take this one.
Okay.
For the treasurer, Mr. Reed. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
There are 1,457 chairs that the Civic Center has replaced here recently, and those chairs are what we're here for, to submit for surplus, so we can dispose or sell.
The council good approval. Thank you, Panita, for us to replace those chairs. We got right on it when the fiscal year began. We're excited about having a new chair to clear out space.
Motion for approval?
Motion for approval?
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Motion passes.
24.
Nobody speaks to this, do they?
Uh huh. You do it first.
Okay. Item number 24.
Discuss and take possible action to appoint a committee of citizens to advise on next steps for the City of Muskogee general obligation bond proposal and capital improvement projects renewal, or take other necessary action.
Deputy Mayor Reed.
Thank you kindly. First of all, the bad news, unfortunately, on tomorrow, we will not go vote and pass the GOBRI because of our action on July the 15th. We removed that item from the agenda, from the ballot. And one of our main reasons for removing that item from the ballot is that we wanted to get community involvement. On the public works agenda, this item that I'm presenting tonight is just the finished work of where we started earlier this month in establishing that we wanted to get a committee together of community citizens to get their input on what the next steps are. What are the next steps are? Are we going to continue with a bond? What are the next steps are? Are we going to go to penny sales tax? What is the next steps? We definitely have a CIP that's coming up that needs to be renewed. And so that's what we're doing today, is we're putting our foot on the gas and moving forward to fulfill the needs of our community through this process. I'm asking tonight that our council members find three people within their circle, three people within their ward, to serve on this community advisory committee. This advisory committee will meet, and they will bring back ideas to the city council members, and it will be the city council members who will make those final decisions. So we need to get three people that, once again, within our circles or within our wards. I'm asking through this agenda item that we have the names submitted by September the 3rd, so we can start in September with the discussion on, you know, where do we go from here? And once again, putting special emphasis on priority, our CIP, which is up to be renewed in the month of, in the year 2025. I was discussing with Mayor Kell, there are some stakeholders that we probably need to consider, including in this number, aside from the three that we represent. And I may miss one of the names, Mayor Kell. I do recall the Ernie Gilder and James Scully representing the City of Muskogee Foundation, Mayor Marlon Coleman, and I believe you have one other name, Mayor Kell.
The superintendent.
Superintendent, most definitely. Superintendent, he has been, he's been.
Quite fine in the Muskogee Public Schools.
Yes.
I think we have one or more.
Are we going to include both superintendents?
Well, we can, but, uh, Mr.?
Exactly can.
Yeah, we wanted to make sure to be included them in this conversation, as well as the city manager and our city attorney needs to be a part of this conversation. And I've heard feedback that a couple of the council members want to be on there as well. I know myself and Mayor Kell want to serve on the committee. I know Ms. Cranford showed an interest, and we could have one more if there's another council, Ms. Shirley Hilton. And so that is the presentation that I present to you. Once again, the action from here would be to approve these appointed persons, as well as each council member to approve three persons.
We have a person that'd like to speak to this matter. Charles Crawford.
Yes, sir.
Charles Crawford, come on down. Mr. Crawford, if you'd state your name, and you have five minutes.
Charles A. Crawford. I live at 1315 West Offhory.
Name's fine.
Okay. I am in Ward 3, and I would like to speak about Agenda Item Number 24, and was hoping that the council and the mayor's office would please hereby please about the consideration of the committee of citizens, how they're actually picked, that the committee of citizens actually be chosen for their capabilities, qualification, education, background in civil engineering, architecture, civic improvement, what they've done in the past, rather than what committees, associations, donations, or affiliations they have with other foundations or committees in the past. Unfortunately, in the City of Muskogee, we seem to see the same people on the same or different boards of entities like Main Street Muskogee, the Chamber of Commerce, and so on and so forth, that are actually often, in my opinion, beneficiaries of their own position on that board. I kindly ask this council to please consider the people that will be chosen by yourself, the three individuals per council member, to be non-biased, non-interested third parties, and not benefit in any way from their activity or advisory position on this committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. I think the work that Deputy Mayor's done on this and his intentions, I like the way he's done it, and with each council member, getting somebody from their ward or somebody they deem appropriate. From what I've heard so far, it's not going to be a popularity contest. They're wanting to make a wide berth of the citizens in Muskogee. I think you'll be pleased.
All right. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford.
Mayor Kell, may I add one other thing?
You certainly may.
I also would like to also, I know this committee is getting big. We're going to have a, we're going to have a big conference room. We're going to need a big conference room here in a minute. But also can we also allow the city manager to pick three people as well to serve on this committee?
I don't see anything wrong with it.
Thank you.
It's your committee. You need to find the room.
All right.
I think you'll find it.
We need a ballroom. But, you know, the committee, in response to Mr. Crawford, this will bring, you know, all of Muskogee together to get behind, you know, my main vision behind this is that Muskogee's going to have to pay for whatever we decide. You know, if we're going to build a better Muskogee, it's going to cost us something. And this is a way that we can get citizens involved in front of those projects that we're willing to invest in. And definitely, we do want people who, you know, are qualified and can bring good ideas to the table. And I thank Mr. Crawford for bringing that to our attention, and let's keep that in consideration when we select our three people.
Thank you. Again, Deputy Mayor, I've talked with the Deputy Mayor, and his intentions are honorable. He wants this to be as visible as possible. He wants the community to not have unanswered questions, and he wants the community to have a ray of people that know about this, so they can tell their next-door neighbors and their friends, and maybe some of their church members. So I applaud him for taking this route, and more than that, I applaud him for taking this so seriously, because providing details and having transparency is real important to him, and that's why he's taken over this project. So thank you again, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And do we need to approve this item? Okay.
Move for approval?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. We're going to strike item number 25, and item number 26, please.
Consider approval of the 2024-2025 Cooperative Agreement between the City of Muskogee and Main Street Muskogee to promote the economic well-being and development of the community by enhancing and revitalizing the downtown area, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Bodenhammer.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the annual cooperative agreement between the City of Muskogee and Main Street Muskogee, and we have retained signatures on this agreement and are presenting it for approval. And this is the amount that was budgeted by City Council at the retreat, and that is giving Main Street Muskogee $100,000 for the July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2025 fiscal year. Happy to answer any questions.
I move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, excuse me, Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Item number 27, please.
Consider approval of the reappointment of Tim Wheeler to the Muskogee City-County Port Authority and the Muskogee City-County Trust Port Authority to serve a four-year term beginning September 1, 2024, and ending August 31, 2028, or take other necessary action.
Counselor Melody Cranford, please.
Yes, sir. I'm recommending that we reappoint Tim Wheeler to the Muskogee City-County Port Authority. Mr. Wheeler has done great work, and they are working on projects that I think his expertise is needed for, so I am asking us to reappoint him tonight.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, guys. We have a motion and a second, and that's an excellent choice. He's a big help to that committee. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number 28.
Consider approval of the reappointment of Eric Elgin to the Muskogee City-County Port Authority and Muskogee City-County Trust Port Authority to serve a full four-year term beginning September 1, 2024, and ending August 31, 2028, or take other necessary action.
Okay. Mr. Elgin is my choice to serve on the port. I've got a few things to say about him. Eric Elgin's the owner of a local business, Oklahoma Interpack. He offers valuable insights into the local business landscape and industry trends. His expertise in packaging and distribution enhances the board's understanding of logistical challenges and market demands. Eric's involvement in the port of Muskogee has been instrumental in fostering strong relationships with local businesses and contributing to the economic development of the region. Eric has been fulfilling John Shilt's term for the past 12 months, and has proven to be essential for sustaining these connections and supporting port authorities' ongoing initiatives. This will essentially be Eric's first term, really. Mr. Shilt had to step down because of health reasons, and Eric took over at that point. And he's been such a wonderful addition to that committee that I'd like to see him back on. I'd make a motion that we.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number 29, please.
Consider approval of the reappointment of David P. Jones to the Muskogee City-County Port Authority and Muskogee City-County Trust Port Authority to serve a four-year term beginning September 1, 2024, and ending August 31, 2028, or take other necessary action.
Counselor Abel.
Yes, sir. David is my choice for the Port Authority. He's been there several terms, I believe, at least the last four years. He does a wonderful job there. He brings a lot of knowledge. He's the bank president of American Bank of Oklahoma, and he brings a wealth of knowledge in that industry to the port, so I'd like to reappoint him.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number 30, please.
Consider approval of confirmation of the county commissioner's reappointment of John Barton to the Muskogee City-County Port Authority and the Muskogee City-County Trust Port Authority to serve a four-year term ending August 30, 2028, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, the county and city both appoint members to this board, and we ratify the others' appointments, and that is what will be happening, or the request to be happening, on the next three items. The county commissioners have appointed Mr. Barton and have requested your ratification of that nomination.
Second.
Motion for approval?
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, excuse me, Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Item number 31.
Consider approval of confirmation of the county commissioner's reappointment of David White to the Muskogee City-County Port Authority and the Muskogee City-County Trust Port Authority to serve a four-year term ending August 30, 2028, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller.
Similarly, the county commissioners have appointed David White and are requesting your ratification of that selection.
Move for approval? Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number 32.
Consider approval of confirmation of the county commissioner's reappointment of Rowdy Fuel to the Muskogee City-County Port Authority and the Muskogee City-County Trust Port Authority to serve a four-year term ending on August 30, 2028, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller.
Similarly, Mr. Fuel has been nominated by the county, and they request our ratification of that appointment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.[1460.15]
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Motion passes. Okay, now, we want to recognize citizens wishing to speak to the mayor and council. Mr. Dustin Williams, please. You have three minutes.
Dustin Williams, 2506 Muskogee Drive. I'm also the president of ASME, the non-uniformed city employees. Right now, what I want to talk to you about is that there is a 3% raise that's being offered to the non-uniformed employees out of the dedicated sales tax fund. That fund actually already belongs to the employees, whether we get it in our wage or we get it in a payout check. So the employees don't consider that a raise. That would be like me going to your bank and taking money out, and then handing it to you and saying, "Here's your raise." So we just kind of wanted to let the city council know that the employees themselves are very disappointed in the whole situation, and would actually like to see council take a different route. That would be awful.
Thank you. Okay, we have another. Mr. Chris Dean, just come up and just state your name, that'll be enough.
Mr. Mayor, Member of the council, my name is Chris Dean, and I'm here representing the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 95. I'd like to take this time to address a significant...
I'm sorry, could you hold just a moment?
Yes, ma'am.
Our timer's not working.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
It says it's paused, ma'am.
Yeah, I know, no, no, sorry. Thank you.
I'd like to take this time to address a significant concern for the City of Muskogee. Across the nation, law enforcement is facing widespread staffing shortages due to social, political, and economic factors. Our city is no different, and we are approaching a critical state. We're in the midst of having staffing levels lower than ever before, and with no projected end in sight. We have fewer applicants during our hiring processes than in years past, and are losing officers at a higher rate than in years past. Unfortunately, we are losing officers to other agencies, retirement, and resignations. For example, we lost five officers recently to the Oklahoma Highway Patrol. All stated that they enjoyed working here, but had to make a financial decision that was in the best interest for their families. We are currently seven officers below our budget full-staff level, and by June of next year, we are preparing for that number to increase to 12 officers below full staff. If you remember, two years ago, the union agreed to reduce the full-staff number for our agency by five positions. These five positions have been vacant and unable to be filled, so that money for those vacant positions was put towards increasing the wages for starting officers as well as current officers. The percentages of staffing levels do not correlate with the demands for our city.